Okay, call this meeting back to order at 6:40 PM. I'll state for the record that Mr. Friedman is on the Google Meet. Ms. Redloth is not here tonight unfortunately. And we're gonna do it just slightly different. We're gonna have the student report first. We're gonna recognize the professional status teachers, then we'll move to public comment. So, Ms. Srikanth, we're gonna start with you if you'd like to provide the student report.
Hi, I'm Sujie Srikanth. I'm a junior at the high school. So, for notable academic matters, we obviously have this at the start of school. And the last Thursday, there was a club fair, so all the clubs organized in the media centers to kind of show the incoming freshmen what's going on and just other people that are interested in joining. And back to school night was also last Thursday, so that's when our parents came and went to all of our classes. For fine arts, marching band competition season is coming up. The Maskers annual haunted playground is on October 21st. In Notorious, the acapella group performed at Town Day and at Apple Fest in the past couple of weeks. For athletic matters, pretty much all fall sports have started. Boys and girls cross-country have a meet against Essex Tech this Wednesday, and it's away. Football games are every Friday night at 7:00, and this week's theme is USA. The boys and girls soccer season has started, and both of them are actually at games right now. And the field hockey season has also started. For our kind of other category extracurriculars, the North Reading High School Team Cure Club encourages students and staff to wear pink on October 2nd for breast cancer awareness. And the post-secondary planning night for seniors is on Thursday, September 28th. For my student work project, this school year, so we haven't really done much, but I had a psychology project where we had to pick a fictional character or a celebrity and kind of explain how the different parts of the brain, you know, work in their life, or at least how they're portrayed on a show. And me and my partner, we picked a character from Criminal Minds because it was very easy to talk about that. And, like, did I come up?
Sure.
Sure.
So, we had to talk about five different parts of the brain. So, we talked about the frontal lobe, the occipital lobe, the amygdala, the hippocampus, and the medulla. And it was all in regards to that one character, and then we had to basically say whether the character was more left-brained or right-brained. This character was more left-brained, and we kind of had our evidence and pictures to back that up. So, that's about it.
Good. Questions, comments? I know your very proud father reached out and said that you are also taking on the role of coaching the robotics. Is it multiple robotics teams now?
Robotics program at North Reading has a bunch of different levels for first tech. So, a bunch of my friends are on the first tech challenge team. I'm coaching a first Lego League challenger team, so that's like seventh and eighth graders.
Awesome. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As always, feel free to stay as long as you like, or if you have other things to do, we understand that as well.
Okay, I'll stay for a little bit.
Okay. And then, Dr. Daly, if you wanna lead us in the recognition of the professional status educators?
Sure. So, I just wanna take a moment to thank everyone. This is something we've done for the last few years. After someone has worked for three consecutive full years in North Reading, they earn professional status, but we, you know, it's a very special relationship. These folks have worked with us for a very long time. They've done a great job in the district. We have quite a few this year, which I think is excellent. I think it speaks to some of the great hiring and the great process and, you know, our induction and mentoring program and the supports we have. So, I know there's a few people here, so if you'd like to just come down, if you're here, and there's maybe a few online as well, that we recognize, but...
And Mr. Friedman is saying that now he can't hear us either.
Okay.
He just...
So, I'll just...
And unmute yours.
I'll just unmute mine, yeah. Let's check that in one second. Okay. Mr. Friedman, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Okay.
Just gonna mute this here. I don't want to leave people on the one end. Well, I might have a little echo for a second. All right. So Jennifer Belanger at J. Turner Hood Elementary School, Catherine Boyle at the Little School, James Burke at the Middle School, Brienne De Perzio at Middle School, Ashley Doak at the Batch Elder, Meredith Gallagher, North Reading Middle School, Colleen Giuffrida at the LD Batch Elder Elementary School, Benjamin Golding at North Reading High School, Deborah Gravalese at the J. Turner Hood Elementary, Lauren Hinson at the Batch Elder School, Grace Jenkins at the Batch Elder School, Katie Lombardi at North Reading Middle School, Andrew Mellon, North Reading Middle School, Kelly Olson at North Reading High School, and Caitlin Trupiano at North Reading High School. So, thank you folks. Sure. Yeah. We'll have folks come together, so, and Cindy will take a picture with the committee if you just wanna come up. But we have a very small token of appreciation, but we wanna have something nice for you just to commemorate the achievement of being with us. Thank you for all you do for our students. Thank you so much. Come on up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy's gonna take a photo. A quick photo. So, a much bigger group, but thank you for being here.
You're representing the whole.
Yes. Love closer, Rich. She won't buy that hurt.
Thank you everyone for all that you do.
Thank you. I think we have some people for public comment tonight, so just gonna start with a real quick overview of public comment. So, rather than trying to pass around a microphone to everybody, we did set up a microphone. If people wanna speak, they can just line up and go that way. The microphone is not for the room, so you're not gonna hear anything in it. The microphone is for NOR Cam, so anybody that's watching on NOR Cam. Oh, you have it for the room also? Okay.
This is the way you're doing it, yeah.
Okay, so we have two now. And overall, for public comment, a few quick things. Number one, the idea of public comment is to hear from you guys. We wanna hear your thoughts. We wanna hear what you're thinking. We're not gonna be discussing. We're not gonna be going back and forth. We're not gonna be, you know, arguing back and forth. Second, we do ask you to try to keep it to about three minutes. I'll be honest, I'm not gonna put a clock on and try to cut people off, but we do ask you to try to keep it to three minutes here. And the only other thing, since we are talking about a negotiation, I'll just be very clear upfront. When we do negotiations, the specifics of it usually stay confidential, and so, and Mr. McGowan is on the negotiating committee, myself and Mrs. Botwell are not, so the only information, Mr. Friedman, the only information we have is through executive session. So, we're not gonna go into specifics of, you know, what's been offered by either side, what's been requested, or anything like that, but we're happy to hear from you guys, okay? And so, if people would like to... Oh, the last thing, please identify yourself. So, please say your name and your address for the record, and we welcome all your thoughts. Mrs. Skieley?
Nancy Skieley, 16 Towahill Road, North Reading. My name is Nancy Skieley, and I have worked as a paraprofessional at the EE Little School for 23 years. I stand here tonight as a representative of Local 4972, the North Reading Federation of Paraprofessionals. I was elected union president in 2019 and served as the union secretary for three years prior to that. I am one of approximately 65 paraprofessionals that strengthen our schools. Myself and many other paraprofessionals on your staff are taxpaying members of this community. We are also your tutors, van monitors, before and after-school staff, extended years, school year staff, and substitute teachers. Paras work hard to support the needs of students in and out of the classroom every day. For too long, we have not been paid a living wage. Although we have previously accepted a 1%, 2%, or 3% cost of living increase, we can no longer afford to do that. The cost of living has skyrocketed. Our rent is higher, the cost of food and fuel are higher, the town's medical insurance has increased by 9% this year. The 3% cost of living increase won't even cover that. As paraprofessionals, we should not have to work two or three jobs to pay our bills and feed our families, as 67% of us are doing currently. Yes, we choose to work as paraprofessionals. We choose it for the love of the children, and we shouldn't have to sacrifice so much to follow our desired career path. When I was hired back in 2000, I was placed at step one and earned $9.52 an hour. 23 years later, with extensive experience, I am at step 20, which is the highest step on our wage scale, earning $24.46 an hour. A difference of $14.94 over 23 years. It's embarrassing to admit that in front of a crowd like this. Whether we are at the top of the wage scale or the lowest step, we deserve better. Our most recent contract expired on June 30th, and we've been bargaining in good faith with the superintendent and school committee since April. We've proposed a living wage, an increase in substitute pay, attendance incentives, improved professional development, and access to safety tools, just to name a few. Several of our proposals have been respectfully rejected by the school committee, while we have been asked to take others off the table altogether. The work we do for the children of North Reading is vital to their success as students and to the success of the North Reading Public Schools. Ask any of our principals if their school could run successfully without their paras, and I guarantee you that they will say no. Ask any of our teachers who have had the privilege of working with a para, and I guarantee you that they will tell you that they could not run a successful classroom without their para. Ask any of our parents whose children have had the privilege of being in a classroom with a para, and I guarantee you that they will tell you how much more successful their child is because of that para. Ask any of our students who have had the privilege of being in a classroom with a para, and I guarantee you that they will tell you how much that para meant to them, how that para worked with them to teach them the necessary tools to be successful, how that para kept them calm when they were sad or nervous, how that para taught them to be a good friend, how that para encouraged them to come to school even though it wasn't easy, and what that para did to show them that they were loved. This is something that I heard yesterday in our professional development. No significant learning can occur without a significant relationship. Finally, we ask you, as our school committee, how your goal to maximize the performance of each student in all academic areas will be achieved without these hard-working paraprofessionals in our schools. The fact is that your goal cannot be achieved without the assistance of the paraprofessionals. The school committee needs us to reach their goals; we need a living wage to reach ours. The time has come to stop undervaluing, underpaying, and under-respecting the paraprofessionals of the North Reading Public Schools. Thank you.
Well said.
Thank you.
Hi, Jessica Skieley, 7 Nichols Street in North Reading. Good evening. My name is Jessica Skieley, and I am here tonight as a representative of the NREA. I'm a special education teacher in a substantially separate classroom at the Batch Elder School. I currently teach eight students across various grade levels with diverse abilities and needs. In order to meet their IEP goals and requirements, it is necessary to be staffed with five adults in our room. This includes myself and four paraprofessionals, although we don't always have the staffing that we require. Those bodies are there so that the legal aspects of the student's IEP can be fulfilled and to support significant academic, social, and emotional challenges in every way possible. Just as doctors can't operate without nurses, pilots can't fly without co-pilots, and coaches can't coach without their assistants, our schools can't operate without our paraprofessionals. The nurses, co-pilots, and assistants are not less than. They are fulfilling a necessary piece of the puzzle, just as our paras do, day in and day out. My mom, who many of you know, is Nancy Skieley. She is one of those fortunate people who loves her job. For the past 23 years, she has shared countless stories about the students she loves so much and the close relationships that she has developed with them along the way. She took a low-wage job in 2000 when I was in sixth grade and my sister was in second. Her sacrifice was our gain by having the same schedule as us. Her dedication and love for her job as a paraprofessional inspired me to become a special ed teacher. I, too, wanted to have a job that I could be proud of and look forward to each day. North Reading Public Schools have an outstanding reputation. I am proud to have attended our schools. I am proud to be an employee of our schools, and I chose to move back to North Reading so that eventually I can send my own child to our schools. We have earned this reputation as a complete staff, not because of teachers alone. We don't work alone. It saddens me to know that the educated, dedicated, and caring support staff that work alongside me are not compensated fairly for the work that they do. The role of the paraprofessional is not going away. As more and more children are labeled as having learning differences, the more we will come to rely on our support staff to meet IEP goals, to support important inclusion opportunities, and to develop our students into the best versions of themselves possible. As Theodore Roosevelt said, "We stand for a living wage. Wages are subnormal if they fail to provide a living for those who devote their time and energy to industrial occupations." The monetary equivalent of a living wage varies according to local conditions, but must include enough to secure the elements of a normal standard of living, a standard high enough to make morality possible, to provide for education and recreation, to care for immature members of the family, to maintain the family during periods of sickness, and to permit a reasonable saving for old age. Theodore Roosevelt died in 1919. Why is it that we are here tonight still fighting for anyone to receive a living wage, let alone our paras who work as hard as they do serving our children? Thank you.
I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of Deb Sharp. She's an educational consultant and special ed advocate at Who's Learning Now. Deb prepared this statement for the September 11th school committee meeting, and she presented it at our rally on the town common. Unfortunately, she wasn't able to be with us tonight, so I am taking her place. So, please know that these are Deb Sharp's words and not my own, even though my feelings might be the same. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed colleagues and honored guests. I pulled into the parking lot early for the IEP meeting. I saw the gray SUV pull up. I saw the passenger door open, but no one got out. I then saw Mrs. Smith come out of the building and walk towards the SUV. Slowly and gently, I saw one of my friends emerging from the SUV, and Mrs. Smith walked alongside her. This student, who has had trouble getting to school, has a special connection with Mrs. Smith, one of the North Reading paraprofessionals who works at the school. Mama's shared that her child cannot get out of the car without seeing a trusted adult. The only trusted adults are the classroom teacher and the paraprofessional. It's not that she won't. It's not about motivation or behavior management; it's just that she can't. This is one, just one example, of the many hats that North Reading paraprofessionals hold. My name is Debbie Sharp. I'm a parent and advocate here in North Reading. I've been teaching since 1993 and have been an advocate for the last 10 years. I'd like to pull back the curtains and share with you how valuable North Reading paraprofessionals are to the education system. It is easy to acknowledge the pivotal role that special education teachers play in designing and modifying accommodations for students with diverse needs. However, let us not overlook the vital link between these strategies and the actual implementation. North Reading paraprofessionals are the ones who take these accommodations and make them a reality, turning theory into practice and turning potential into progress. They forge connections with their students that go beyond the classroom walls. A successful learning environment is built on trust, and North Reading paraprofessionals are masters at creating these bridges of trust with their students. These remarkable individuals are tasked with a delicate balance. They are both mentors and motivators, encouraging students to develop self-advocacy skills while fostering their social growth. As they teach valuable skills, they also function as a pillar of support empowering students to navigate their journey with confidence. This dual role is nothing short of remarkable. In addition, let us recognize the huge efforts North Reading paraprofessionals undertake daily. They adapt to various teaching styles, catering to the diverse needs of both students and teachers, all the while making accommodations on the fly. This level of dedication demands our respect and admiration. The financial compensation they receive often fails to reflect the path of their contributions, the depths, excuse me, of their contributions. Ladies and gentlemen, it is time to acknowledge that North Reading paraprofessionals are not just an accessory in our education system, but a cornerstone of the success. Their tireless dedication, unwavering compassion, and pivotal role in turning inclusion into reality deserve our utmost appreciation. As we reflect upon the transformative power of education, let us remember the special education paraprofessionals who work tirelessly to ensure that every child's potential is realized. It is time to not only recognize their efforts, but to also elevate their status within our educational institutions, providing them with the support and recognition that they so rightfully deserve. And that says, and she says, "Thank you for letting her speak," Debbie Sharp, and she's the special education advocate.
Yes.
Mary Ann Keith?
Yeah, there's a hand, right? Yeah, okay.
I think she...
Yeah. Mary Ann Keith, can you unmute?
Hi, yeah.
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, great. My name is Mary Ann Keith. I live at 339 April Street, and I speak to you tonight as both an educator and a parent. My family and I fully support our school's paraprofessionals receiving a living wage. We have seen firsthand just how vital a role our paras play, not only in providing academic instruction, but also in keeping our children safe and cared for. We moved here 10 years ago because of the reputation of the North Reading Public Schools. As everyone here knows, families are attracted to North Reading because of the success of our schools. Our schools would not and could not be successful without the tireless work of our paraprofessional support staff. As a parent of a child with special needs, I consistently see the impact our paras have on both his academic success and social well-being. My son's education literally would not be possible without paraprofessional support. It is clear that our paras love what they do, deeply care for the children they support, work tirelessly, and wear many hats throughout the school day. They deserve to be compensated for this hard work. My son's daily experience is so heavily reliant on paraprofessional support that I worry about our paras having to work exhausting additional jobs, or worse yet, leaving for higher-paid jobs. One job should be enough. As a kindergarten teacher, I can tell you that my classroom paras were my lifeline. And as a first-grade teacher, I relied on the support of my paras, not only with the special education students in my classroom, but also all students in my class. The success of all of our children hinges on positive collaborative relationships within our schools. This includes our dedicated paras who assist and sub in our classrooms, interact with our children during lunch and recess, and offer a helping hand during arrival and dismissal. We feel so lucky to live here in North Reading. Both of our children are thriving. They love their school. They love each and every one of their teachers, and they sing the praises of the many paraprofessionals with whom they interact daily. These are our community members. They are North Reading alumni. They are parents of students. They work our before and after-school programs. Many of our paras spend their afternoons, evenings, and weekends working additional jobs, and they continue to show up for and support the children of North Reading. Our paras deserve a living wage. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keith.
My name is Lori Capazudo. I live at 12 Dwayne Drive, North Reading. I've been a special ed paraprofessional in this community for 17 years, and on behalf of my fellow paras, I wish to formally read you our petition. Again, on behalf of the North Reading paraprofessionals, simple demands: a living wage and respect. North Reading Public Schools could not function without the invaluable work of paraprofessionals. The school committee admits this. The cost of living has skyrocketed, while the role of the paraprofessionals has expanded and increased in importance. The school committee is offering the smallest wage increases to the group of workers who already earn the least money. The proposals of the school committee and the district administration are insufficient and not in the best interests of our district or our community. The undersigned individuals demand that the North Reading School Committee and District Administration swiftly settle a contract which provides support staff with the respect and living wage that they deserve. And on that note, I wish to present to the school committee and administration about 1,400 signatures that were gathered throughout the community. We were hoping for 500. We got almost 400. Community stands behind us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Always has.
No? Okay. Well, we appreciate everybody coming out. We appreciate you guys speaking with us. As I said in the beginning, we really can't talk about the financial negotiations, but we hear you. We appreciate you guys being respectful and... So if there's no other public comment, I will close public comment. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Pause for a moment here. I think they want to wait for the policies, right? A little bit of school improvement plan, Dr. Daley?
If we're...
Leave us here?
I would recommend to...
Okay. Now, wait. I heard from other people that you were there and you were leaving.
Actually, I was... Those are the kids that I coached in fifth grade and sixth grade.
Okay.
So we were coming back from Orlando.
Oh, you came over to see? Okay. I heard from a grapevine that you were there, so...
It's all up here.
Are you going to put it up? Patrick, you're putting it up on the screen, so we should maybe move up there?
I have Michael and Kathy send me something. Is yours covering everyone?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, I was here for a little bit before I was on this. That's how insane I am. It's seventh year on here, and I've been...
All right, I appreciate the opportunity to go first. Are you... We all set, sir?
I am. I'm just going to share it here as well for the folks at home. Give me one second.
My name is J. Jared LaPrenne, the high school principal. Happy to present the school improvement plan this evening. This document should look familiar. It's the improvement plan model that we switched to a couple of years ago now. This tab down the bottom is the 23-24 information, or 22-23 information is there on this tab. And I would like to begin by sharing the same slideshow that I opened the first faculty meeting with this September. So the data that we're going to see here, so before I even get to that, excuse me. You may be recalling that in the 22-23 school year, we had a lot of successes. We had state championships, we had state recognition, we had just an unbelievable amount of success. And what's great about that is it really encompassed the entire student body. But what's also significant is largely out of the classroom. And what I like to begin with tonight is the success that we saw in 22-23 in the classroom. The MCAS scores as presented on Open Architects here, and then the following slide is what is on the DESE website. And we're kind of comparing 22 and 23. So I had started with the Open Architect information because it was slightly different. So if you saw what was on the DESE website, you saw this. But in 2022, our English Language Arts mean streak exceeding was 66%, up to 83% in 2023, that 2023 data. In math, our 68 mean streak exceeds went up to 79. Again, that's sophomore math MCAS scores. In science, we went from 65, and again, the Open Architect data was pulling the old legacy test and not the next-generation test. So that data, I didn't include that because it wasn't the same test, but this is, and we went from essentially 66 to 77. So that's MCAS. We can look at much more data and other successes. I want to talk about the AP scores. And we're kind of going chronologically a little different here, 21, 22, and 23. Every score that is in green is an increase from the previous year. And I'm just going to kind of scroll through this quickly. You can see the amount of kind of green scores on the side there. Even, let's say, with English Language, we dipped a little bit, but you can see that the average score was still a three, above a three, which most colleges accept for credit. Down the bottom here, that 80.6% is 265 of the 329 tests that were taken. And that is an 80.6% three-or-better score. And as you can see, that is better than 2022 and a bit better than 2021. We're still giving 329 tests. Enrollment is down a little bit, but students are still challenging themselves. This is, you know, certainly very helpful data. I'll go to that in a second. I want to talk a little bit more about AP scores because we did additional work with the kind of a DEIB lens, and I want to speak about that briefly. I'm not going to go through this entire document that we just showed on the webpage today, but I wanted to hit some highlights, and I think this was a good place to start. Also, you may recall that Boston Magazine does its Greater Boston Schools ranking. This year, we checked in at number 30, and that is up from last year where we were at 42. So consistently, again, that success that we saw in the 22-23 school year was pervasive. And it's going to extend as we look at the additional information here. It's going to extend kind of just beyond the MCAS scores and just beyond the AP exams. All of these links on this 2022-23 page, this tab, these are all live, and we'll click to excerpts from the school improvement plan that track the department goal, the data that is there, and how that data informed our decision for the 23-24 year. I do want to just speak briefly about this work that we did here with our AP participation analysis. One of the things that Dr. Daley and I worked on was this idea of answering this question, how do we know that advanced placement classes are accessible to all students? We conducted a root cause study. We looked at topics from the program of study, from the work that the guidance department does, to data around what kids, you know, demographic data, what kids take which tests, what does that enrollment look like, what practices and procedures do we have in the classroom that might support students and encourage more students to participate. So all of that work is here. Our data team, Coach Michelle Caulfield, who now serves as our STEM Director, has been fantastic. She conducted an entire kind of demographic review around which students take which AP exams and how that relates back to the norm and the aggregate of, or I should say, it's all-normed data to the percentages of students in that specific subgroup. These courses in this tab are courses that sophomores, juniors, and seniors can take. The courses in this tab are juniors and senior-only courses and senior-only courses. So all of this data, again, that we worked through to identify specific findings and determinations. One thing that I want to share with you here is a little bit more of a deep dive into race. And what we see is 22-23 here on our left, and 23-24 enrollment on our right. So all those students in the 22-23 obviously took the test, completed the course. These are the students that are enrolled right now. And as you can see, we've got an increased number of races represented, and we've got an overall increase of percentage of students that are taking or enrolled in an AP course right now. I know I'm throwing a lot out there. Any questions at this moment? I think this next slide is very telling. So up top, we have the overall demographic breakdown at the high school, all students in 22 and 23. And then underneath that, just simply 10, 11, 12, because again, freshmen are not eligible to take AP courses. So we looked at that eligibility group, and what we can see here along the left side of the, again, 22 and 23, enrolled students, 186 students took 329 tests. So roughly, every student took almost two tests. But if you look at non-white students, 27 took 52 tests, and white students, 159 took 277. So that non-white representation is slightly higher with relation to how many tests they took. And then you can see the breakdown of the entire eligibility group, that percentage of the 466, and then that percentage of the 186, the kids that actually took it. And you can see that that demographic ratio is consistent with the population. We would like more kids in general to take AP courses and challenge themselves, but that's that 22-23 data. And then with respect to the outcome of the scores, this information here is essentially saying 218 of white students of 277 got three or better. Forty-seven of the 52 tests that were taken by non-white students, okay, 90% had a three or better. So it'll be really interesting to see what we, you know, here is where we are in 23-24, enrolled students. And you can see, again, there's an increase in representation overall, and a slight increase with respect to representation to the testing subgroup. So the work that, again, we're focused on and we're doing to try to encourage that, I think that really grew out of the study. We're heading in the right direction. I'm going to focus on maybe one or two more things and then open it up for questions, because there is so much here, it's overwhelming. But again, this is what's on the website. So this is all live links and ready to go. What we saw, I think, with respect to the improvement in writing and the improvement in the English Language Arts MCAS, that was kind of a collective work. We had the English Department focus on a goal on specifically on writing and improving writing. We had the Science Department, which is a really, let's see if I can just show you there, I thought this was a really neat, this is good work right here. Oh, next steps, here we go. This should go to this. Yeah, okay. This, whoop. This is not the one I want. Let's go to this. Yeah. I'll get there in one second. The Science Department. Ah! Okay.
Can't pull any strings?
Wasn't prepared for that. It worked yesterday. So what they did is every department has implemented small formative assessment models where there's a graph, or their goal is, again, essentially, how well are students able to construct a scientific explanation? So again, rationalizing their thought through writing and presenting that. And I think, so that is a department-wide goal. They're going to continue it this year now. They've got baseline data, they've got growth data. But again, I think we saw those overall MCAS scores increase, and that kind of open response piece was a big part of that. So not only were we focusing that in English, but also in science as well. So again, it's kind of like a, you know, a broad approach to that writing assessment. With respect to the 23-24, because that English work is kind of ongoing, they're going to use a similar model with respect to reading, and identifying those specific criteria around reading that will help build those reading skills and to look at growth in that area. So I guess I'll open it up for questions. I don't want to be the only speaker tonight. We've got a lot of presentations, but...
Thank you, Mr. LaPrenne. So, and Rich, I don't have a computer, so if Jeff says anything, will you let me know? So I'll begin, and you probably have forgotten, but a couple of years ago, I wasn't really pleased with the school improvement plan, but I will just say, I want to say, this looks excellent. You know, I can tell there's a ton of work that's gone into this, and honestly, like, this looks really good. I spent more time than I want to admit, like, looking through and clicking on things and, like, looking through individual, like, you know, science and all the various, you know, groups, their improvement plans, and so it's excellent, so I just want to applaud, you know, you for that.
Thank you.
My first, my general question is, so who puts this together? I mean, is there, can you talk a little bit about who, like, is it each department does it, and then you collaborated, or is there a group that's doing this and that's...
So the department leaders essentially work, will work as our leadership team and speak about the data and the goals and the direction that the department is heading, what they've learned, and what they're, you know, what they're seeing with respect to students and student learning, and then shape that. I mean, we talked certainly about the fact that this document is really the combination of a lot of threads coming together. Threads from NRPS 2025, threads from our own school council, and what the school council looks at and observes and recommends. And then, of course, it brings in, again, the specific department work from the individual teachers, from the department leaders, and we're, you know, what we do is try to bring all of that together here, and it is very comprehensive, but I think we've done a nice job, again, with identifying areas to grow into. So, and I'll just say briefly, we, you know, our AP model, that Goal 5 from 22-23, that study that we did, now we're engaged in this work here with looking at Power Block and saying, are we using Power Block to our best student's benefit, to the best benefit of the students, and what can we do with that? So we have created our action group called the Repo Team, Rethinking Power Block. It is 15 people strong. We've got students, we've got a couple of administrators, we've got department leaders, we've got, you know, members from all, special ed instructors. So this, you know, kind of comprehensive study hopefully will yield, you know... So, this, you know, kind of comprehensive study, hopefully, will yield, you know, some creative changes that we could pilot in Power Block this year, and then maybe see if that, if the model changes in the future, what does it look like and how can we get there? So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of brands at work.
So, all my remaining questions are generally for everybody. I can hold off on those or kind of get through everything, but there's more general ones. Rich, Jeff, Diane, any specific questions on the high school?
I have one. I'm curious, in this, in the development of this process, how, how has that changed the role of your, of your school council? And what role are they playing in any of this process? Or has their role changed quite a bit over the last few years?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, you know, I think the school council, certainly, we, you know, we, we take all of this department data in. We consider everything, you know, we, it's a, it's a group that is almost half students, you know? So, we really have access to that student voice piece there. So, we might be dealing with, you know, kind of campus situations or ideas that might, you know, impact kind of some day-to-day stuff. But the bigger picture ideas are always, you know, we do always start with, you know, we kind of start the school year with what do, you know, what did we decide of where we were last year? And how did we get there? And what are we learning about right now? So, we'll go through this and we'll have updated reports from the department leaders as the data is collected and as the, you know, as the school year goes on and they start to fill in, fill in the specifics around their, their goals. I hope that answers your question.
Just because of that question, two of my questions are somewhat relevant or related. Number one, is this the right time for the school improvement plans? They used to be at the end of the year. Then we moved them to what was supposed to be the beginning of the year. I know that the beginning of the year was a little challenging because you were, you know, opening buildings up. And so, is this really where they should sit, do you think, everybody?
I, you know, I think it makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, I get, I get kind of where, why we're doing it here in this cycle and what, you know, what do we think we want to invest our time in? And then, let's see, you know, by, you know, by April, May, June, kind of where are we?
Dr. O'Connell?
I spoke with the superintendent about pushing back, not just because you're opening schools, but also because many of our goals that relate to MCAS and MCAS results were still, first, you know, if they weren't public, they were also preliminary. So, having just a little bit more time allowed us to be more conclusive with goal determination. I think this is the right time.
Yeah, that's second.
I also like the fact that during the summer, we get, we have our new space retreat where we go over NACUS 2025. And, you know, from that, we step away with a lot of focus on what we should be looking at in our schools. And it helps us to develop our goals. And that retreat, I believe, happens in August, so.
And just to piggyback a little bit from our data lens, we use the iReady across the three elementary. So, that is, that was a tight window to get like a May-June assessment. And then you prepare to present the exam June 11 for a school improvement with that data. So, it just gives a little bit more time to, like, look at and digest it and kind of understand it.
And I also think to write better, and in my case, different goals than what I have in the past. And be really thoughtful and reflective on what's best to set goals and set metrics for students to measure their success and growth. So, I concur with everything that has been said.
Okay, good. And then, the only other comment was on the school councils. I notice a lot of the school councils don't have community members. Is there a composition that it's supposed to have, that it has to have? I mean.
It's supposed to, per the regs, but it, I'll tell you, it's a tough exercise to go through and try to find. So, I've had real estate, and I've been lucky, I'd stop and shop. But I was in contact with Starbucks and several other places and they kind of, everybody's busy. It's hard to get that extra body affiliated.
I think the only other stipulation is you can't have more school representatives than non-school representatives.
Yeah.
Parents, students have to, community reps have to outweigh the faculty.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
And you, Mr. LaPrat?
Nice job. I'm just gonna share, because you're just gonna deliver this, right?
Yeah, anything I would like to always do in my show.
I didn't believe it. I have our presentation.
Yeah, no, I gotta hear.
I'm just not looking, so just yell. Throw something.
If you could just. Is that right?
Yeah, that's fine.
If you, do you wanna start with this or with the presentation?
Well, I'll start with the presentation.
If you don't mind, I'm just gonna do, I'm gonna have you share here. It's a lot easier.
Yeah, and then where is the one I wanna share?
It'll be. You can actually run it now from here. This is a great future.
Good evening, everyone. I think this is the first time I've had to present with glasses. Means I'm getting old, I think. That doesn't help, actually. It's pretty small.
Is that big enough? Or, yeah, why don't we just go, you can still go to this one.
That's good, thank you. I just want to start by acknowledging my school council, myself, Laura Oliveto, our assistant principal, two teachers, Gail Demore and Kathleen Kirwin. My community representative for several years now has been Amy Luckowitz. I hope that she likes, would like to continue. It's great to have her. And two parents, Linda Emery and Carrie Antonuccio. Linda's actually ending her term. We will miss her, she's been super helpful. So, we will have the two teachers, Carrie, and we're looking for a new parent. We're actually having the middle school parents currently vote on a new parent representative for this next year's two-year, actually, school council. So, thanks to that, this team for helping me develop the school improvement plan that I'll be presenting tonight. I do wanna actually go there first. How did you say to go to the plan, Patrick? Oh, there it is. I got it, yeah. So, I just want to draw your attention to this. This is the plan that I'm presenting. And at the bottom of the plan, if you haven't already seen, is a summary for each of last year's goals with hyperlinks. So, each of the goals from the 2022, 2023 school year, there is a hyperlink with an end-of-year update. I don't know, I'm signed in as Patrick, so I don't know if, yeah, so, it did open. You can see how we did based on our goals from the previous year. So, each one, there's an update. And that helped inform the new goals. So, I just wanted to draw your attention to that. And then the highlights from last year, I just pulled out three big, big highlights for our school. One was the professional learning communities that we established, actually, you know, following in my elementary school colleagues' work that they've been doing with their staff. We started last year piloting professional learning communities as a way for staff across grades, across disciplines, including paraprofessionals, actually. We invited them to join us, to come together monthly to discuss and learn together on a topic of their choosing. And so, we started that last year. We're gonna continue that this year, and I'll talk about that a little bit. Restorative practices was something that we started last year, and I presented in March when the middle school had their presentation. And that's also something that we're celebrating, starting, and continuing this year. And then, just a little bit, not quite as much as, as Mr. LaPrat, but we'll share a little bit of the highlights from the MCAS results from last year for the middle school. So, the professional learning groups, last year, we had one on universal design for learning that was led by our two UDL mentors. Again, this is a group coming together on a topic of their choice. Staff were able to choose the topic that they wanted to learn about and collectively grow together and learn, led by our two UDL mentors. Our restorative practices, professional learning community was led by our adjustment counselor and one of our teachers. We had a peer observation professional learning community. And these topics were generated by our teachers. These were the ideas that they wanted to talk about. So, a group of teachers came together, led by two teachers, to talk about observing each other and learning from each other. We also had an interdisciplinary learning kind of collaboration group that wanted to learn about how we can better connect our disciplines. Actually, back when I decided I wanted to be a middle school teacher, it was for this very reason that the team concept that I experienced as a child in middle school was something that I thought was pretty neat, that teachers knew what each other were planning and talking about. And our teachers want to do more of that. They want to make connections. I was in a grade seven computer science class today, actually, Mr. Burke's class today, who was here tonight receiving his professional status award. And he was doing a really neat activity with Tinkercad. So, the seventh grade students were designing homes that had to have three energy-efficient components. And I was thinking to myself, I wonder if he's talked to the seventh grade science teachers, because they could embed, you know, some of what they're learning in science with what they're learning in computer science. So, that was a PLC from last year. Also, co-teaching, that's something where, we don't have a lot of classes, but we have a handful of classes each day that have two licensed professionals in the classroom and learning how we can better use those licensed professionals and how we can, you know, take the two different licensed staff and really bounce off of each other and make the best experience for our students. And then also classroom management. Classroom management is something that, I think, post-pandemic has been an area where teachers are feeling a little fragile and a little challenged with dealing with the different needs of children. So, coming together to talk about the strategies that each other are using and finding success with, was something that the teachers came up with as an idea for one of the PLCs. We're continuing them again this year. Couple of new topics this year. One is grading. A group of teachers want to talk about grading, and particularly with a focus on standards-based grading. And also DEIB, a group of teachers want to talk about, which I'm gonna get to in a minute. That important work of making sure that our classrooms are culturally responsive, that our teaching is inclusive, and that all of our students feel welcome and that they belong in our classrooms. So, again, restorative practices, just to build on what we talked about in March, is something that we are implementing as an entire staff. Last year, there were about a dozen or so teachers trained through an outside consultant. We also had, as I mentioned, a restorative practices PLC. This year, I can say today, there's already 20 people that are signed up that wanna be a part of this year's restorative practices PLC. We're also going to be providing opportunities for students, which I think is really important, more students. We had a small group last year. We're gonna try to have a bigger group this year, experience the community circles of restorative practices so that we can really focus on our core value of community and developing that sense of belonging with our students. It's also something that we're using reactively with discipline. And I, one of the goals from last year was to reduce our suspensions. And we did successfully, I think we halved our suspensions from the previous year. And restorative practices is an alternative to suspension and a way to really emphasize repair and learning. I had also said in the last year's school improvement plan that we were gonna create some learning modules for students when they do find themselves on the other side of a discipline issue, that we were going to create learning modules to help students learn from the choices that they've made and to hopefully mitigate repeat offenses and help students make better choices, you know, when they're here at school and certainly outside of school as well. So, that's something that we're excited about continuing from last year. I think I've already talked on that. And then, just our MCAS, you know, big picture, I would say, almost, you know, it's a little early. I know Mr. McLean, Mr. Colleen will be presenting to the school committee soon on the overall MCAS results. But I think that, big picture, the middle school maintained, I would say, more status quo as to the year before. In terms of meeting our targets, I've kind of boxed off and read here places where we've met our targets. This is for ELA, and this is the, you know, the disaggregate. So, starting with all students and then into the subgroups. And one of the places that we were focusing on last year in our plan was for students who did not successfully pass the MCAS last year. And so, that is an area, you know, for all students that we want to focus on. We don't want any students to not be successful on the MCAS. So, we're continuing with that goal from last year to make sure that any student from this current year that didn't, that was not successful on the MCAS did not meet expectations, that we really focus on those students, particularly with our MTSS intervention time, working with those students in those specific areas to make sure that their growth percentile increases and that they get closer to passing, hopefully, meeting expectations on this coming spring's MCAS. This is math. And again, the boxes are the places where we met or exceeded our target.
Can I ask one follow-up on this one?
Yeah.
Because I was trying to line them up, and some of the ones, the 2023 was lower than the 2022, but it said that the goal was met and others. So, what were the goals based on?
DESI sets the targets. They set the targets on a, you know, not a super complex algorithm, but they look at each subgroup, they look at where they performed the year before, and then they set a target. And that's what this is based on, as to whether, what the achievement was in 2022 and then what the achievement was in 2023. And then, whether or not the target, you know, this is the target, if the target was met. And where we are in terms of if we're on a recovery path or if we are on a path forward, these are all, you know, DESI jargon terms for growth, for the targets that they set. So, the first one was ELA.
Yeah, it just, it just seems like, because some of them, like, in the middle, like, the 514.9, it was down 5.1. The target was 521, but it says recovery path exceeded target.
Yeah, I, we could look into it more. I mean, this is what is on.
It has 2019 data this far and this fall.
Okay. Okay.
So, it's all the targets that DESI sets compared to not just our school, but also compared to all, I believe, we're compared to K-8 schools. So, the targets are our targets, but we're also then overall compared to other K-8 schools in the Commonwealth. So, we looked at math. And then, science, as we know, there's no SGP because it's tested in five and eight. Not as much of an improvement, I think, in science. We need to also begin to talk about which, which is part of the plan, the science goal, the new test that's going to be coming in the spring that's more performance-based in science. So, thinking about what that new test is gonna look like in adjusting our instruction and our assessments. Although it seems small, this was something that I was really pleased to see that we exceeded in almost every area our absenteeism. And that, you know, I think is perhaps in large part attributed to our bridge program, which has been successful with our adjustment counselor. This is the third year, this year is the third year of our bridge program. And to see that we, you know, significantly reduced our chronically absent rate from 14.9% in 2022 to 8%. Still, 8% is too high, but we're headed and trending in the right direction in terms of students need to be here in order to learn. It's also a metrics for school climate from the student perspective. When student absenteeism is lower, it can be an indicator of students want to be here. They want to, they want to come to school. So, that was something I was pleased to see.
What's the definition of chronic absenteeism?
10%, more than 10% of the school year. So, at any given time, that number can change.
Is that your question, Rich?
Yep.
And then, these are the goals, the proposed goals for this coming year. So, again, still sticking with those MCAS goals for any student that did not meet or partially met. Those are our students that were really, you know, those are our vulnerable students. The students that did not meet or partially met expectations this past spring, we want to target them. We want to focus on them, particularly in our MTSS interventions, but also in classroom instruction. We want to make sure that those students are getting the good instruction that they need in their areas. iReady is very helpful for ELA and math because it can tell us specifically, as MCAS can too. But the iReady, like Dr. McKay mentioned, we just administered iReady in reading and math. And so, those scores are even fresher and more valid than the May, April, and May MCAS results. So, we can really target those kids and determine what focus areas they need.
Do I ready beginning and end of year? Is that right?
End mid-year.
On mid-year, okay.
Yeah, so there's three data points. And then, for the students that are identified for an intervention during our intervention block, we also do little mini diagnostic iReady, like dip-sticking where they are. They're smaller assessments, but they give us good data. us good data, broken down by domains, that can really help the teacher focus on the specific places where the students, individual students need focus. The science goal is based on the common assessment data, and again, I've already had initial conversations with our science leader regarding the new performance-based assessment that's going to be coming, just to make sure that we're prepared for that. Math is similar to the reading goal, based on MCAS, and then something that we started last year that we're continuing this year is the curriculum mapping process. That's something that should be done pretty regularly in schools, just to revisit, last year, we did a scope and sequence, and most disciplines completed a scope and sequence, what are they teaching, when, with what resources, so the standards obviously is what they are teaching, but when, with what resources, and then this year, we're asking students, teachers to fully flesh out and develop two units, that would include lessons, assessments, any sort of resources, all in one place, for the purposes of vertical alignment, for the purposes of the interdisciplinary connections that I mentioned earlier, but also for the purposes of DEIB work and UDL work, we need to have an accurate, up-to-date understanding of what teachers are teaching when, so that we can help them if any adjustments need to be made to resources, or to methodologies, or to assessments, to make sure that we're really making our classrooms accessible to all learners. And so we're excited about that work, and that's something that is a multi-year project that certainly won't be done by the end of this year. And then student support services, we're continuing with our MTSS work that we've been implementing probably, I think, maybe for six years or so, and we're identifying students that need an intervention in math, reading, science, or, well, for the goal here, we're going to base it on an improvement in MCAS performance next year. So any student that's receiving an intervention this year, we're going to look for an increase next year in their MCAS, as a data point to show whether the intervention was successful. We also are including a goal around restorative practices for students and staff, hoping that after year two of implementing this framework, students and staff will demonstrate an increased understanding of what it is, how it affects them, how it will benefit our school, and that is something that, again, as I mentioned, we're really excited about, and think will have a large impact on the entire middle school community. And then, a big goal that I think we'll hear from the elementary schools as well is conducting some DEIB and UDL walkthroughs, we actually started today at the middle school, so with our DEIB consultant and our UDL consultant, myself and the assistant principal walked through 13 classrooms today, looking for indicators of inclusivity, looking for indicators of engagement, and what we're going to do is we're not giving direct feedback to individual teachers, we're going to take all that we see and share resources and share highlights, and build the capacity of us as administrators to really help our teachers with this work, to help them make sure that when they're designing lessons, as I mentioned, that they're accessible for all learners, that there are entry points for all learners, and that all learners in their classrooms feel like they belong. And so we're really excited about that work, and I think you may hear about it at the elementary level as well. And I think that's it. And again, the last year's school improvement plan at the bottom has the highlights from this past year with all the, you know, end-of-year summaries, I don't know if there's any questions.
I have two questions and one comment. First question, you mentioned co-teaching, so we've heard from Dr. McKay in the past a lot about co-teaching, I've only heard it really at the elementary, so I'm curious, what's the role and what's the vision at middle school about going to co-teaching, and how does that, how does that work?
I think that the goal has always been at the middle school, that when there are, or at any, I think the elementaries as well, when there are two licensed professionals in the classroom to maximize their expertise, and as I said earlier, it's not every classroom, but there are classrooms where there are two licensed teachers, and the goal would be that you could walk in with me and not be able to discern who is the general ed classroom teacher and who is the special ed teacher, there should be a, you know, a really kind of nuanced relationship between the two, where they're kind of back and forth, back and forth. What I like, what I would like to see is, you know, a stations model, which is something our elementary school teachers really excel at, where their direct instruction may occur in small stations, and the children rotate through, so they are able to spend time in a smaller group, if you have 25 kids in a class, they're in groups of five, they're rotating through the different stations, and two of those stations would have a teacher, and the teacher would be, you know, providing the direct instruction, or previewing, or reviewing, so I think it's just making, you know, opportunities for the teachers to plan together, which comes down, you know, it's always hard to find the time, but, so that they are, another reason to do the curriculum mapping is so that the teachers have access to, what are we teaching today, what resources are we using, what can I do with my expertise to help, you know, ensure that every student in the classroom leaves meeting the objective or meeting the goal. So for us, it's been something that we've been working on, it's certainly still a work in progress, but that would be the hope for.
Second question, you talked about, I think you said it was a goal to have, but you don't have a group yet, but a group on grading, can you talk a little bit about what the goal of that group would be, is it to change the grading in some way, or like, what would the overall thoughts be?
It's a, it is a teacher-initiated PLC topic, so a teacher approached me actually over the summer, and very much wanted to host a professional learning community on the topic of grading, and I don't necessarily know exactly where it will go, I know that we have been talking about standards-based grading, and not a standards-based report card, we're not there yet, but just in our own assessments, our internal assessments, ensuring that they are tied to the standards, and some teachers, science teachers especially, have been using a tool called Edulastic, which is a platform that allows teachers to really, helps them create standards-based assessments, and so I'd like to hope that that's part of the conversation, but I think what's really important about professional learning communities at this level, is that they're teacher-driven, and so, you know, they're going to report out, they're going to share notes, they're going to share topics, but I, at this point, don't want to dictate what they talk about, but I'm very curious.
Yeah, okay, and my comment, other than excellent job as always, I would just say, my comment, my general comment is, sometimes people come to the school committee meetings and say, you should be banning this book, or you should be doing this or that, I'll just say, tonight is why you understand, we are not educators, we can't do any of this, we need you guys to do this, and, you know, just to be clear, you're letting us know what's going on, but really, we couldn't even begin to do what you guys are doing in these school improvement plans, and so, you know, we've been talking about that a lot more in the last couple of years, about how we support your independence, and we support you guys being the educators, but I think this is a really nice way to point out exactly why that's necessary, because clearly, all of you have so much training in this area, like, we couldn't even begin to start, you know, making sure that, you know, this assessment is looking for this, and then you take that information, and then you adjust this, you know, this lesson plan, and it's just, it's wonderful to see, and I'm glad that you guys are the ones doing it for us.
I think we all feel very fortunate to be in this district, and I think the most important thing that Dr. Daley helps us with is the synergy, that everything needs to kind of connect to the, you know, NRPS 2025 and our goals as a district, and I think that's the, that's what we stand behind and what we believe in. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye. I'm not leaving, but I'll be back in once.
I'm happy to, I did switch the order.
You switched the order?
I did, I did. Good evening, should I wait for?
Wait.
He's buckling.
It's okay.
No, okay. You don't have to wait, it's fine. So Chris Molly called me the other day and asked me if I would go first, I'm third in the presentation, so I gladly offered to go first.
No, I said do the introduction.
Do the introduction? Okay, well, I'll do the introduction. I'm Michaeloni, I'm principal of the bachelor's school, as Dr. O'Connell said, I'm very appreciative to work in the district, this is, I'm starting my 16th year, started as a teacher, assistant to the little school, now fortunate enough to be at the bachelor's school, and really do appreciate all the work that we do together, appreciate your time tonight to allow us to speak a little bit about our plan for improvement in all three of our elementary schools. We try to align as much as we possibly can, but in a conversation with Dr. Daley and with my school council, we want to kind of put a stamp on, on who we are as an individual school at the bachelor's school, so I'll talk a little bit about that when I get to my presentation, but I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Molly, because she is first in the presentation.
I need something to stand on. Just add one down, is that right? Hi, everybody, thanks for having us again. I'd like to start out by thanking my last year's council, we have many of the same members this year, but last year, I'd like to shout out to one of my teachers who's not on it this year, Lauren Kelly, and one of the parent representatives, Francine Coughlin, who was on the council for the last two years, and this is our new council, new council parent representatives, Rebecca Anzoni and Katie Gabriello, who's here this evening, teacher representatives, Beth Brown, Carrie Fleck, we have a community representative, if you remember, I hadn't had a community rep for many, many years, and I've had one for two years running, so I'm very excited, Amy Darling and myself, Chris Molly. This is my 20th year, I'm just starting my 20th year in North Reading, 14th year as a principal, six years in the classroom before becoming a principal, and every day, it's been an honor to be in this district. Just a few quick highlights, we continued the change in our, what we used to call faculty meeting format, to a PLC. Last year, we did more whole group work, specifically in writing, in math, as a result of our MCAS scores and our I-ready scores. This year, we're changing it up, where we have more small group work and book studies going on between members of the faculty and the paraprofessionals. We're proud to say that the state accountability report indicated that our school achieved an accountability percentile of 96%. We were thankfully able to add a .4 adjustment counselor to support tier one and tier two social emotional learning. We implemented wind blocks in all K-5 classrooms, three days a week in ELA. This year, we're trying to work with the schedule to try to figure out how we can do that for math, because we've seen marked improvement in our test scores and in the success of the children, and we believe that's because of the interventions that we've put in place. We got new Massachusetts social studies books in grade three, and some Sphero Bolt power packs for robotics and digital learning. We worked closely with the PTO to ensure that all of the events that they offer, and there are many, and they're all wonderful, are inclusive events, we offer some sensory-friendly times prior to those events happening, where families that have children that might be sensitive to sound or crowds have an opportunity to come in early. Our winter concert, family fitness night, academic night, and the little school arts night, all returned to in-person, we're very excited about that. We had a musical presentation, which was very successful, Mr. Tatro offered the musical clowns, it was a huge success. PTO sponsored a used bicycle drive, Elise Blandfiglio is here tonight, she spearheaded that, and we were able to collect 67 used bicycles on a Saturday afternoon, those were donated to the Bike Connection for refurbishment and donation to children and adults alike that were in need of bicycles for transportation. And lastly, we were very proud of one of our fourth grade students who received a first-place award for her poem that was submitted to the North Reading Garden Club, she was first place in the state and the region, Maddie Brown, and her poem was How My Garden Grows, and she was second place in the nation for that poem, so we were very excited for her and for the garden club and for the school. Quickly, just some, I did some graphics, because I know, I know, we want to go visual, but just so you can see, we were very pleased with our I-ready scores, if you recall, the goals were to have 85% of children in tier one, 13% of children in tier two, and 3% of children in tier three. So the areas in yellow are places where we did not achieve those percentages, but everywhere else, and in tier three, we were zero in most categories at the end of the year, except for grade five ELA, which was 7%, and although 7% seems kind of high, it was four students. So, we have a ways to go, but still a lot of improvement that we're very proud of. This is it, this is that data shown visually, so on the left here is what the triangle should look like, what our goal was, 85, 13, and 2, and then, if you look at the top two triangles, the one on the left was the beginning of the year, we had 63% in tier one, 27% in tier two, and 11% in tier three, when we first did the I-ready in the fall, we ended the year with 89% in tier one, I think that says 8% in tier two, and 3% at tier three. The green grew immensely, and that's where we're trying to move, we'd like, we'd like to strive for an all-green triangle. In math, which are the two triangles at the bottom, we started out the year with only 35% in tier one, 56% of our students were in tier two, and 9% in tier three, and just so you know, tier one is on or above grade level, tier two is one grade level behind, tier three is greater than one grade level behind. At the end of the year, you can see the difference in the triangle, tier one, we had 87%, tier two, 13%, and zero at tier three, so a lot of really good improvement.
Mrs. Molly, one quick question, so on the I-ready, so like, in third grade, if you're taking an I-ready at the beginning and the end of the year, is the same information, it's third grade math at the beginning, and then the same sort of questions at the end of the year?
Yes, and it, and it.
It's adaptive.
It's adaptive, right, so the better you do, the longer it goes, and when you start struggling, it changes the questions a little bit, but.
And you can test out some of the domains.
And we actually do it three times a year, we do it in January as well, so. This graphic, it did not, it's a little bit hard to see, this came directly from I-ready, these are the three grades that we based our goals on, grades three, four, and five, and it shows the, if you look at, for instance, grade five here on the bottom, it shows you the fall is the bottom one, it's just another way to look at the triangle, but this is broken out by grade, and so you can see that, it's kind of backwards to me, but the final diagnostic is the bar on the top, and so you can see that in grade five, the green grew, grade four, the green, so a lot of really nice improvement as far as I-ready. And the MCAS scores, I started to look at them, we've seen kind of the same trend in our scores, things are looking, we haven't really gotten a chance to really dig down deep into it, but on the surface, it looks like there's been a lot of nice improvement. For new goals, I actually kept the same two teaching and learning goals, but I upped the percentages, so now we'll be looking for 90% of our students to be in tier one, 10% in tier two, and we'd like to maintain that no students by the end of the year will be in tier three, and that's for ELA and math. And keeping in mind that these goals are aligned to the three big rocks of the NRPS 2025, so we have two teaching and learning goals, a student services goal, which is the expansion of the MTSS, those are our wind blocks that we've implemented at all grade levels. This year, we'll be more of a focus on strengthening tier two instruction, always looking at keeping tier one instruction, improving tier one instruction is vital, but also looking at how can we improve tier two instruction. And the last one is the diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging goal that Dr. O'Connell spoke about, and this is the district's focus on the equity walkthrough frameworks, and I am working with the leadership team on this to establish a criteria and what those walks should look like. We have early adopters in our buildings, which are our leadership teams, so those are the classrooms that we're going to be starting these equity walks with. going to be starting these equity walks with, and we'll be giving, again, whole school feedback instead of individual feedback to students. This is all aligned with NRPS 2025 and the D cap, the UDL, and the MasDSE rubrics for teachers and administrators. Of note, I am continuing the PLC process, and that is one of my, that is my professional practice goal, and my leadership team is heavily involved in that as well. Let's see. And that's it for me. Thank you. Any questions?
We finally have a principal who's not being weighed down by a Buckley in their school.
Dr. McKay. I have, no, I have one.
No, I know. I said, Dr. McGay.
I finally have one that's not been weighed down by a Buckley.
Didn't realize that. My three went across, so I understand that. Well, thank you for having us. So just a shout out or a thank you to my school council members, Mrs. Alamonti, Mrs. Taylor, my parent representatives. I had a switch in the middle of the year of a teacher representative. So Mrs. Gorman and Mrs. Mayuski split that role last year. I have the vacant community representative, and I have Mrs. Hefner on my team. So I really appreciated their feedback, their lens on all of our discussions. So we had some highlights from 2023. We maintained our accountability percentile ranking at the ninety-third percentile. We were very excited to do that. Our parents deserve a significant shout out for all the work they've done around fundraising and playgrounds. So we are in phase one right now of a three-phase process for a new playground at the Hood School. Our parent generated, the old play structure is removed. We wanted to shovel on the ground by September, and we achieved that. So very excited about that. We continue to host our school-wide community meetings around safe, responsible, respectful, and kind. So we always shoot for four of those and then fill in if we need more if something happens. We continued with our science school-wide maker days. We had four last year. It was nice to realize we've become further removed from COVID, because prior to COVID, we were mixing grade levels up. So we'd take the students and scatter them across grade levels and have like mentor fifth graders in each class. We had pulled away from that during COVID, and we were very excited to kind of bring it back to that, that genuine mix up everybody in the building, go to different classrooms, learn with different people, meet other members of the school community, and work together to achieve a goal. Our therapy doc program continues to be in place. Logan will be back starting, I believe, next Tuesday. So happy to have that in place. The Hood School Musical, Winnie the Pooh, was a huge success. Happy to have it here at the high school. Super focused on universal design and social emotional learning with the staff and the implementation of the increased school adjustment council. That's been very helpful to do that, along with the UDL mentors that we have in the building. And we continued forward with our learning communities. Last year, we had the science of reading, permission to feel safe, responsible, respectful, kind, MTS interventions, and steam ahead. This year, we added student and community voice as well as equity, and we removed MTSS interventions. So just a little change this year. As Mrs. Molly had said, we have the triangle. We want as much green as possible. The Hood School set their goals at tier one, eighty-five percent of students in tier one, thirteen percent in tier two, and two percent in tier three. So happy to report that we achieved that in grades, totally in grades three, ELA, and five, math. And then if you look across the rest of it, we've achieved it in different places, but I wanted to get, I'm a full-credit person on this one, so I was kind of like trying to figure out each area where we met it, but we met it solely in grades three, ELA, and grade five, math. Another look at the data here. As much like Mrs. Molly said, this does print out a little hazy when you take it off of iReady. I'm really impressed with the growth scores from our fall diagnostic to our end-of-year assessment, particularly if you go over to the right and you look at math. So in grade three, our math scores over baseline increased fifty-five, fifty-seven percentage points, forty-five in grade four, and forty-three in grade five. So some huge growth in math last year. Very excited, very proud of my teams. We did have that increased focus on math, and sometimes when you give attention to one thing, it pulls it away from another. So it's just time for us to recalibrate a little bit, but very excited about the growth there. Just additional goal outcomes from the last year's school improvement plan. We did update our whole school-wide system of student recognition, school-wide expectations, and we've had full implementation across one hundred percent of the grade level classrooms. A hundred percent of the school-based teams discussed professional, professional learning strategies or learning mechanisms in their collaboration blocks fifty percent of the time, and we highlighted the role of social emotional learning in our students by hosting a family social emotional learning night, and we have updated the school website to include outside resources from Dr. Dow. As I had said, we had updated our school-wide expectations. So this is just one of those samples of kind of one of those visuals that you'll see around the school, and this is for our recess of safe, responsible, respectful, kind, and kind of what area that we focus on in each one of them. And those topics are reviewed at each one of our school-wide community meetings. New goals for this year, a little different than the little school, but the ELA and math remain the same as last year at the eighty-five and thirteen and two for tier one, tier two, and tier three respectively. Our student services goal under MTSS is to implement a disabilities awareness program through understanding our differences as outlined in NRPS 2025. I think it was super important for us as a school to focus on some inclusionary practices and how to reach that at the student level, hosting two of the programs in the district. It was definitely just a nice discussion through that whole school council process, and that's where that was driven from. As far as DEIB, we'll increase student and community voice in decision-making, and we're running that, as far as, we're running that under one of our professional learning communities, and that group is going to generate the baseline data that we'll use to see what actually we're doing and then what we can do to improve. Any questions?
I don't have any.
I have a question for the group, and I think I've asked this before, but I'd be interested to ask it again. The iReady scores give you great insight into individual students as well as, in addition to giving you a picture of how the school's doing, you can drill down and see what individual students are doing. How does that translate as a student moves from elementary school to middle school, for instance, and perhaps different assessments as they move from middle school to high school, so that the new school is ready to take on the challenge of that student?
Good question.
Great question. When you keep Dr. Huang alluded to a little bit about the intervention program that they run at the middle school with the rate of the time of specific students that may need for ELA and math, and children mentioned centers and stations. So the tier two of MTSS, we're going to use that data at the batch, and I'm sure it's been a little to identify the students that may need a tier two intervention. Yes. So you know, there's testing, testing out six to eight-week, you know, intervention. So the student enters in, has the intervention, and we can test the students in or out to test them out if they
Progress monitor.
Progress monitor, so then they can, you know, go back to that SCAR one. So it's just really a flexible model to really drill down specifically tied with instruction to the student that they may or may not need.
And does the information pass, like with fifth grade, does it pass to the middle school as they enter middle school? And are you picking it up at that point?
I have access to it. What it is, is helping my teachers understand the value of the June data. They want the fresh data in September, but I do have access to the June data from the fifth grade.
I mean, it makes sense that they would
But they want, they want the data. They want to see what regression hopefully didn't but may have occurred over the summer. But we definitely have access to it. One place where I think the district could look to improve is keeping better track of interventions that are occurring at the elementary level for students and then getting that information to the middle school or to the high school, because you've had children for five, six years, found success with certain things, and unless they're on a fiber four plan or an IEP plan, that information doesn't always get transferred. So some sort of system we could, we could talk about inclusion in NRPS 2025 or NRPS 2030.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just, you know, a thank you to my school council. Kate Aronies is a parent representative. Kate Pay is a faculty representative. Carrie Eichman, parent representative, myself. Struggled to find a community representative, but the goal of mine to find someone to fill that position this year. And Sandra O'Connell was on the school council last year, but she just took a position in another district, so she was scheduled to be on that. So I need to pull my faculty to get a new faculty representative for this year. So just a few highlights from last year. First of all, I'd like to congratulate all the schools on the success. I know how hard that we work throughout the school year to allow our students the opportunity to have that success. So I know we've all met many targets and have exceeded some of those targets. We always have places to learn, but I really, I, you know, when I talk to teachers about ed eval and the goal-setting process, I really think that the goal-setting process is the most important piece of educator value plan, school improvement plan, district plan, NRPS 2025, because it shows that we're being reflective. We're looking back on what we did, what we didn't do, and setting targets to get better. I go back to coaching. I coached, you know, varsity soccer for a long time at the end of the season and say, well, what do we do well? What didn't we do so well? When, you know, you define it in terms of a school, it has a bigger impact, but it's really that process of goal-setting. And I really do appreciate the hard work and the commitment of all the educators in my building, in all the buildings. It's, you know, from the school nurse to the paraprofessionals, to the teachers, custodial staff. It really does take a village to achieve the success that we have in the district. And again, I want to thank you all for your time tonight. And to, I think, Mr. Buckley, you talked about the timing of writing the school improvement plans. It does really give us a better picture of what we did in the previous school year. And, you know, I think I emailed Mr. Colleen about this, but I'm very humbled and proud to say that the bachelor school was recognized as a school of recognition for our students' performance, our teachers' performance on last year's MCAS. Our percentile rank was ninety-nine, and we were identified as a school of recognition, and it's, you know, one of sixty-five schools. So I'm very humbled and proud to be able to say that. And, you know, I'm not a person to kind of brag, I'm really not, but it's, I said to the staff, it's really their hard work that got us there and the care and concern that they have for our students. Another highlight last year, again, we educate the whole student, is we had the addition of a full-time school adjustment council. So last year, we had the full-time school adjustment council in the Hood and the Little shared, and they did increase that this year. But, you know, our full-time school adjustment council was able to deliver, how can I find this, once a week to all of our classrooms, a thirty-minute SEL lesson. And Christina Futri worked very hard to write that curriculum and had a nice scope and sequence to meet the needs of, the social emotional learning needs of all of our students. And it, it's anecdotal data, but she has a lot of data that we started to look at this year to revamp that curriculum or to review it and revise it. But it really, that school community piece, and it's really been a great addition to have those SEL lessons. She calls it celebrate, SEL, you know, the spelling, but it's really a nice place for students to be able to go and kind of learn those soft skills. We continue the Thanksgiving food basket tradition to the food pantries, where we collect, you know, fifty baskets of food, and we collect some money and, you know, go to our Stop and Shop, the partnership of Stop and Shop, to have those baskets for families in need. Our parental involvement with our BPO was back to pre-COVID levels. It was nice to see. It was really my first year there where, you know, parents were in and out and volunteering and being a part of the classroom. We did have a second-place finish in the nationwide explorer vision competition. We celebrated that last spring, but that was Mr. Cassell's baby, and, you know, he went out on, almost on top, but close enough. We had a very successful fun run sponsored by the BPO, and that really funds a lot of what we were able to do, which brings me to my next bullet point, is that we replaced all the clocks throughout the building, and they're all on the same time right down to the second. It's wonderful what you can do when everybody's running at the same time.
I don't think I've ever seen the teachers back here.
And again, you know, we had the fine arts night, student performances, first-grade concert. That all returned. And everything that we do, we embed our spotlight values. And, you know, we talk to our students about what those spotlight values are and why they are important.
Did you also finish second place in the turkey trot?
We don't, we don't
There's no more trophies. That's it.
There's no more space for the little school to keep
End of the era.
It's too cold to run on Thanksgiving. So just some other academic, actually academic highlights from 2223. We met our school improvement plan goals in all areas except for one. So ninety-two percent of our students in grades two through five scored on or above tier one, and our target last year was ninety percent. We had seven percent in tier two and two percent in tier three, and that was in ELA. In math, we had ninety percent of our students, ninety-one percent of our students in tier one, target was ninety. We had nine percent of students in tier two. Our target was actually eight, so we didn't meet that. And then in tier three, we had one percent of our students, and our target was two. So I really think that that data informs our teaching and learning throughout the school year, so teachers are able to use that to target specific areas of need and identify areas of strength. You know, just as a side note, we were, and this actually connects to the goals that I wrote, our academic goals for this year. We were a super stretch growth school for iReady, where sixty-one percent of our students met their stretch growth. So I'm going to talk a little bit in a minute about typical annual growth, and that's the growth that a student should achieve based on the baseline placement data in the end of the year. And then there's also a stretch growth target that iReady creates for those students based on that beginning of the year data. So sixty-one percent of our students met that super stretch growth target last year, or stretch growth target, I should say. So we were proud of that as well. We strengthened our tier one instruction, and, you know, the data, our iReady data, our MCAS scores show that that tier one instruction is an area of strength for all of our teachers, and we've been working on that the last couple of years. And I think the data shows that we have strengthened that to the level where it needs to be for all of our students. And then we also aligned our professional meeting time, our ed plans, and the school improvement plans on the initiatives of UDL, SEL, and MTSS to expand choice and access for all students. And it goes back to the synergy. I think that we have, I use the analogy of everybody pulling on the rope in the same direction. If everyone's doing that, we're gonna, you know, move some pretty significant things. Just, you know, different ways of looking at our end-of-year testing. You know, this is two different ways. This is, there's five, five levels of placement. So, you know, seventy-eight and fourteen, so ninety-two percent in ELA. We're on tier one, seven percent tier two, and two, two percent in tier three. And then our math data is very similar. So that was last year. So looking forward to this year, when I first shared these goals with Dr. Dale, he said, why would you reduce your targets on your, using your iReady data? But it's just a different way to look at student success and growth. And I feel, and I had a lot of conversations with Suzanne Callen, who's my data specialist and academic interventionist, that it captures all students and sets a target of a year's growth for all students. So for example, a third-grade student comes in and scores early three is, you know, what it looks like for us. So after a year's worth of instruction, that student should realize a typical annual growth. So it's the annual growth for a student based on their grade and baseline placement level. So if they're early three, they should end at late three or early four. So that's a year's typical growth. So a student on the other end, maybe they come in and score, a third grader scores at late three. So an annual growth for them should be, you know, late three, late four, or, you know, mid-four. So a year's growth. So we're getting all ends of the, so we're getting students that, you know, maybe they score early two or mid-two. We want to get them to mid-three, you know, mid-three. So it's that year's worth of growth based on the instruction in whatever grade level we're testing them at. So it's just a way to capture all those students. So it's just a way to capture all those students, just a different way to look at it, you know, tier one, tier two, tier three, but this is more specific to each individual students, student. And it also speaks to our second goal of, you know, looking at our tier-two instruction throughout the school, but I'm focusing with my teachers more on in the classroom. How can we deliver that tier-two instruction? How can we change, how can teachers change their instructional approach so that they provide that tier-two instruction within the classroom? So instead of pulling, you know, students out of the classroom to have a small group, how do we do that within the classroom so it's more kind of just part of the pedagogy in their class? So that's our third goal, and that's our student services. And then the DEIB goal is the same as the middle school and the other two elementary schools, so we're all working on that together. So that, is that, any questions? Yes.
Can I ask a question on what you just described in terms of like the way you're changing your goal? So if you have a, if you have a child that's in third grade and they come in early in the year, you know, maybe they test kind of, well, maybe they're more advanced and they test far into the third grade year, and you want them to see annual growth, which potentially would put them into subsequent year. Are the teachers sort of expanding what they're teaching to cover the next grade? Is that sort of the expectation for some of the kids that are more advanced? Or do you set yourself up for failure if you're not doing that to meet that trajectory for those children?
Not that we're setting ourselves, but just setting, I think, a bit of a higher target.
Yeah.
I think we're able to go into a little bit more depth, a little more complexity with some of the grade level standards. You know, we're not going to start teaching, you know, above a student's level, but if it does push into the next grade level, I would welcome that. We do have students that test very high at the start, and now what are we doing for those students, I think, is the question in the discussions that we're going to have, you know, in those smaller professional learning communities. So, you have a very good test late three, so what are we doing to meet that specific student's need, even though it's a need on the higher, higher end?
No, I think that's a great way to look at it, and to, if you can accommodate that, those students.
And that speaks to, you know, the UDL and differentiation of instruction and, you know, all the things that we're working on, you know, to meet that specific need.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. So I have a few broad topics, not for anybody in particular, and I don't know if I should bring them up, and I'm going to anyway, so Dr. Daley and Rich are both going to be clenching their teeth. So the very first one is, there's a, there's a big movement right now to try to eliminate MCAS. And I'm just curious, because we're looking at MCAS data for all of this, and I'm just more broadly, when we have all the administrators here, just curious if you guys have any thoughts on that? Like, again, I was just approached going into a store a couple of weeks ago about this, and so I'm just curious what the thoughts are on, you know, the movement to try to eliminate MCAS? If anybody has any, you don't have to share.
I have a ton of thoughts that I'm happy to share, but I'll let them.
I knew you would, but.
I have most emotions.
I personally, and I might be jumping into the fight here, but I, I think MCAS is good. I think it holds us accountable as schools, as teachers, as the district. It's a great measure of, you know, are we doing what we're supposed to be doing? Now, whether it's a graduation requirement, I don't, I don't know, but I think it's a valuable tool for us to show that we're doing what we should be doing and let us know what we can be doing better.
There's so much data in there that if we didn't look at it, I mean, if we didn't have that, I wonder how I would know how to inform my practice. I just think it's so valuable to have that data.
I agree. The only, the only issue that I sometimes struggle with is the amount of testing. Somehow I feel like if they had the right people looking at developing those tests, could be cut down. Instead of fifth grade having to test for six days, six solid days, could we do it in three days? But the data was valuable. It's just that I feel like the kids are weary by the time it's over, and then we have to give them iReady after that. So it's a lot.
Again, while we have you and we're talking about improvement plans, we're looking at it, it just came to my mind. Second, second one is more, not really a question, but just making sure that when we have three different elementary schools, making sure that we have equity amongst them, because we do have different populations in different districts. And I just want to make sure when we're, when we're setting goals as school committee and as a district across the area, that we do have different populations, and I want to just make sure that we are, that we're not falling behind. I mean, I think, you know, fundraisers raise different amounts of different schools, and so, again, just something to keep in mind, and if we see, if we ever start to see that there's gaps developing amongst the elementary schools, just to make sure that we raise it and try to address it. Again, just a comment. And then the third comment is really from the public comment this morning, or from earlier in the, in the meeting. I think it's something that, when we talk about our goals in a minute, I might bring up as well, but I would, I would really like to see some ways that we can recognize paraprofessionals a little bit more than we might right now. I mean, we bring professional status teachers in when they've been here for three years and recognize them, and I do think that's something that would go a long way. And so outside of negotiations and everything else, it was just something that I was thinking of tonight as well, where, you know, their paraprofessionals have been here for a long, long time, and so, you know, I would just challenge all of us, I mean, the school committee and all the administration too, to find ways that we can maybe celebrate, you know, everybody in our buildings. I mean, there's, the middle school, there's a great, you know, award for the, you know, teacher of the year. And so, again, I just think it's something that we, you know, the school committee members, Julie Kofke years ago, said we should be bringing teachers and celebrating them here, but I think we should think about expanding that as well, because they are a valuable part of our, of our education. And just, just something that I would, you know, I want to do here, but I would just challenge everybody to do as well, so. If there's no other comment, Rich? Okay.
Oh, I was just, I, I 100% agree with what you just said, and I was thinking, as you talked about the clocks, that maybe we should have had you come and present to the capital improvement committee, then maybe, then we could have gotten those clocks paid for a different way. But it kind of speaks to that equity part, to make sure that, that we're not relying on fundraising, and if somebody's not getting the fundraising, that they're not missing out on something, so.
That's actually a perfect example.
Yeah.
Because we wanted clocks in other schools too, and we didn't get them because one, one was able to pay for them. We do have to have a motion to accept the school improvement plan. Cindy, are we okay doing it as one big motion? To accept all of them? Okay. Mr. McGowan, or is that well?
I will move that the committee vote to accept these exceptional school improvement plans from all of our fine schools.
Okay, and since we have Mr. Friedman's remote, we'll do a roll call vote. Rich?
Aye.
Diana? Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an a as well. Thank you very much, everybody. Passes four to zero. Dr. Daley?
Like, just for a moment while everyone's here too, I love the idea of celebration, so any more that we can do to recognize folks, I highly encourage. I think we all sort of were in agreement with the sentiments around the paraprofessionals and the important work they do, like our teachers as well, obviously, all members of our community. But while our principals are here, I think we honestly don't really reach out and thank them enough for what they do. Even this process alone, as I'm sitting here watching it tonight, I'm just seeing the pain points of trying to get alignment and things over the years. I think they were doing a lot of this for many, many years. I don't want to say that it's changed, but in some ways it has. Really, every goal is so measurable aligned to NRPS. And when I present on NRPS, we don't really have to do those meteor check-ins anymore because I can do the NRPS overview, which then shows you the school goals, the department goals, their own educator goals, and the overlaps. I feel like this year, it's really starting to come together in our conversations. When we talk about dedication and time in the district, I was thinking as I was sitting out there, time as an administrator and in some cases, teachers prior in North Reading, it's over 75 years with these five people here, you know? And when Sean was there, we could probably get over 100, right? When I talk to my colleagues that have had the turnover at their buildings, the classes I teach now, we're talking about evaluation, and they say, I've had, you know, seven principals in five years. And I mean, to have 75-year plus with the dedication that these folks have, and remember, all the expertise and knowledge that they're talking about, their job has changed so much, probably in the time they've been doing it, to become experts not only in subject matter, putting out fires, building management, but being able to talk about data and growth, new technologies, bringing that on. And I just want to say thank you to them for all that they do. Mr. Maloney mentioned about the school recognition. I think that's really important to recognize, only 65 schools in the Commonwealth that achieve that. We've had, you know, in the past, we've had, you know, the hood has scored some of the highest in the state in science. We have, you know, a school, a blue ribbon school in the little school, our middle school and our high school, Boston Magazine, middle schools, you know, rising through the ranks, they're getting into that 80th percentile, something that's so important. It's so hard at middle school, across the board with MCAS, there's always a dip in middle school, and then it kind of comes back in high school. It's always been our story, but they've really risen. So just a little round of applause from us here for the work that you do. So thank you folks so much for that.
This has quickly become, this has definitely become one of the highlights of the year for me, this meeting, and it's because of the way this, the work has evolved. As you say, it may have been happening behind the scenes, but to be able to present it like this is fabulous.
From where I sit, you know, honestly, it started, moving it to September was in my, sort of an outgrowth, the COVID, really hard year, can we have a little, you know, and it just clicked all of a sudden, where like the fact that we're able to, to take, you know, one of the big goals was this not to be a post-mortem on '22, '23. We've kind of said like 25% of that, and then 75%, how do we take that, build on it, and move forward? With the data being available, I feel like this might be the sweet spot, like, you know, early enough in the year, right before we're setting our goals with educators for the year, to have our improvement plan approved. But to have that data to be able to really speak to it, it makes it so much more powerful, I think. And we have that summer to kind of come together at our retreat, so this seems pretty good, I think. I'll get their opinions, and obviously, and the law does allow us to set that time. This seems to really work for what we're trying to do, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Okay.
Welcome to stay for the policy updates.
I know.
Have a great night.
Have a free to vote without me on the policy.
I don't know if we can, we'll wait for you, but.
Yeah, I know.
Two-minute break while we're waiting for everyone. Oh, you got coffee in that? Every night I come to these, I say, I should have eaten before I come to the meeting, and I never do. I appreciate it, thank you. I had a lot of gummy bears on the way over from the car. There's a lot of that when I'm going to Danvers Indoor. Jeff, you're killing me because you're not here. We have to do roll call votes on everything. Thank you.
Sorry, such a burden.
Okay. Dr. Daley's not here, but we're gonna, we're gonna move on without Dr. Daley anyways. Okay, with the second reading of Policy JC, Student Discipline. We went over this last meeting, we've read it, we've approved the handbook. Jeff, do you want to lead any discussion or make a motion on approving the second reason, reading?
Is that a motion to approve it?
Well, we have to have a second motion. I don't know if there's anything you want to say. You're on the policy subcommittee, so I'm just referring to you if you want to make the motion or have any comments.
No, I really don't, I mean, other than, other than just reading it, there's not much to add.
Yeah. It aligns with the law, and it's what we over last time, so do you want to make the motion?
Motion to approve the changes as written for the, for the policy regarding discipline.
Policy JC, student discipline? Perfect. Yeah, and a second reading.
For a second read, sir.
Okay, we have our motion.
Second.
We have our second. Jeff?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Diana? I'm an a as well, passes four zero. Thank you very much. Okay, we have two appointments, North Shore Education Consortium Board of Directors and the SEEM Collaborative Board of Directors. I assume we are appointing Dr. Daley, but Dr. Daley, do you want these appointments?
I'm happy to just.
Chair of SEEM, so I've been disappointed.
Should we just go through them?
Do you want?
I think we do two separate motions, sorry.
Well, they're two separate motions, but do you have any comments on either of them, or happy to serve?
You know, as always, we're very appreciative of the collaborative participation. There's a lot of benefits, not only for alternative programs for students, but also for other opportunities, when Kathy was referring to the Equity Walks with India and Emily, those are two positions that are created through our collaborative as well. So there's so many different benefits there. I'm really excited for some of the work. I'm going to join a subgroup with the North Shore Collaborative. They have one of the state's recovery high schools, and we're really trying to look at how to improve that model. I think that's such an important program for kids, so I'm excited about some of the programs in both of these groups, and I would be honored to continue to serve.
I will move that the committee vote to appoint Dr. Daley to be the North Reading Representative to the North Shore Education Consortium Board of Directors.
We have a motion, we have a second. Rich?
Aye.
Diana? Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an a as well, passes four zero.
And I would also move that the committee vote to appoint Dr. Daley as the North Reading Representative to the SEEM Collaborative Board of Directors.
We have a motion, we have a second. Rich?
Aye.
Diana? Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an a as well, passes four zero. Thank you, Dr. Daley. It amazes me how many things you do and how you have time to do all that, but we appreciate it. Okay, on to the minutes. So, Mr. McGowan, you want to lead us to the minutes?
Are we passing over the goals?
Oh, I did pass over the goals, sorry. Where was it? Oh, because it was very bottom of the page, sorry. School committee draft goals, yes, we can go through this. Diana wasn't here. Diana has graciously agreed to lead every one of the goals this year. She wasn't here, so she's appointed to every one of them. So why don't we just kind of walk through it? We can, we can wait for Noel to be here before we sort of assign what it is, but let's see if this reflects what we talked about in our workshop and kind of go from step by step. So leadership and governance, we have two on there. The first is, the committee will engage in one professional development presentation or session related to the school committee responsibilities and authority under master general laws. And the other is that school committee will review the school committee policies related to the school's safety plan, and the role of the school resource officer. Did we want to take that one off or keep that one on? Did we say? We had those discussions last year, and I can't remember what we said.
I will, yeah, I don't remember what we said either, but I would defer to what Jeff, what Diana and Jeff feel, Diana especially, since it's a particular interest in whether we've sort of gotten to a good place or why we keep talking about it, and Dr. Daley may have an opinion as well.
If I may, I just want to say, I had in the notes, policy structures, and this is the one that I wasn't quite sure. I think we may have said to keep this goal, but to modify it with looking at our existing policies and the structures of the resource officer and other aspects of school safety, and just kind of enhance this goal. and the structures of the resource officer and other aspects of school safety and just kind of enhance this goal. Maybe make it a little different, but I think that's what we discussed, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a little difficult to define exactly what the goal would be. I don't think it's, you know, harmful to keep anything in here that we would continue to look into it, but I just don't know how to define what result we'd want at the end of the day.
Right.
And maybe that's just it, maybe the process is the goal. And we have a new police chief too, and he might have, you know, certain theory to build upon over the years for the school resource officer. It'd be, you know, interesting to continue those conversations.
And, and, yeah, and I think with the, with the new chief, there is some more resources that are being allocated to us if we wanted as well, so, okay.
And there's a new role in addition to school safety officer, officer, um, O'Leary is, has a new role in the town. I'm blanking on the title right now, but it's in our EOP's plan. I think I shared it out with the community. And so that's, that's just another great layer because Officer Lucci, in addition to being the SRO, is also the juvenile officer. So if he's caught in a paperwork cycle, or if he's doing something of the SRO work, these, like, for example, the safety walks of the buildings, Officer O'Leary now is going to be in charge of, of that. So, so, yeah, if there's a recommendation to keep that, I think there, I would say there's definitely a lot to work on as a goal.
Should we expand it beyond just in the role of the school resource officer and maybe to, in the, in the interaction with North Reading Police Department? Because there's two different roles now and, I mean, because the SRO is through the police department as well. There's a second role now, so maybe we, maybe we just modify this to talk more broadly about the interaction with not just that one role, but there's two different people, there's walkthroughs and things like that. Does that sound like a more accurate description of what we-
Would you just take resource out as in the role of school officers?
Yeah, I mean, maybe we could include fires, but you could just make it even broader, just the school safety, you know, the, the town, the town safety officers, you know? Maybe there's something there.
And it definitely seems like there's a policy, there is a policy element to this, right? Because do we, you know, our, is our policy on school resource officer, for instance, a little bit behind what the actual role is or anything? I, I mean, I don't remember, but, um, so.
We can certainly look at all of that.
So maybe we, maybe we keep this, but we expand it beyond just defining their old school resource, resource officer and looking-
That relationship between the, the safety apparatus.
Okay, and so we can, when we have a full committee, we can kind of go through and figure out who is going to be the lead on these ones. Financial asset management, so there was four here and then there's one at the very bottom that I think needs to be a separate one. But we have right now, the school committee will support the development of the, of a plan to reduce the kindergarten fees, leading towards the eventual goal of providing free full-day kindergarten. And we'll explore the next steps to increase access to universal free day, free, full day, or free pre-K. I'm not saying that right. Second one, we'll look at opportunities to explore expenses with solar power. Well, there's been, what we said at the, at the last one was, last year we looked at it and nothing has changed, but there's some new initiatives out there that we do want to make sure that we look at, and so, with that? No, but I mean, the, the bottom line is, last year we came to the conclusion that it didn't make sense, but there are some new initiatives out there, and so we should look into them again.
And it continues to be one of the few things we could actually potentially do to actually have an impact on expenses, which, you know.
Correct, and, and, and even if it's not necessarily solar panels on the school, we talked about, you know, charging stations or things like that and there. I think we should look at what the initiatives are out there and if we can get some of those advancements. School committee will develop strategies to preserve positions that support, and supports that were implemented in part with ESER funds. Will also continue to move the district forward in the alignment with NRPS twenty-twenty-five. I think the key thing there is the ESER funds are exhausted after this year. So there are currently three positions that are at least partially being funded by ESER funds. And so we need to find a way to get those into the budget somehow. So they basically would be new adds to the budget for next year and those are essentially existing positions. So I think that's an important role still. And then the school committee will review the impact of NRPS twenty-twenty-five, impact on NRPS families of the current structure and schedule for extracurricular and athletic activities. So we passed the universal fee cap, but we talked specifically about looking at other fees as well, whether they should be aligned differently, whether they could be reduced. I'm going to throw some crazy things out when we do our updates from committees, but I think that's an important one. I think there needs to be number five as well. I think we need to look at the bus rates. Because the bus contract is up this year. We have two options for next year. Those option years are large increases compared to the last two, and so I think we do definitely need to look at bus fees overall, schedules, whatever. So I think we need to add a fifth one in there specifically related to that. Because we had talked at the, at the workshop whether we should put them into one big goal, but we actually thought that there's a lot in there. And so it would be better to have different discussions on, you know, the bus fee should be different than extracurriculars, which is different than, uh, full-day kindergarten.
Yep.
So I think we add that as number five on there.
Added these sentences about presentations, that's not really part of the goal, but I just wanted for discussion tonight, I just wanted to add.
Yeah.
Yeah, that can definitely be something we can help with.
Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm, I'm very nervous about losing ESER funds, the huge bus increase, and, and the reality is, the option that we have is probably better than the alternative if we were to go out to bed again. But we have to talk to Mr. Connolly about that and if we can go out to bed or if we should or not and what's out there. For educational program, school committee will participate in working group to implement the steps of NRPS twenty-twenty-five, goals related to DEIB. I think since we just saw that was on all the school improvement plans, we should probably keep that. I don't think the work is done there yet. We'll encourage the district-wide exploration of the UDL and the expansion of MTS-S. You know, Noel, at the last, the workshop really wanted to keep that on there. She thought that was good. And not done yet. And then for family and community relations, continue work with CPAC. I thought we added something else.
So there's one added to the, here.
I didn't, oh, no, sorry, the, very bad, I didn't, I didn't notice that one. School committee work with North Reading. What's added? Why am I not seeing one? Oh, yeah, sorry. Why did this not print? Oh, you know what? So you guys are all seeing this one, yeah. So we'll support the opportunities for outdoor time for students. The superintendent will prepare presentations, topics with the committee. Yes, we were looking through, um, for some reason I printed an old one.
Yeah, I updated this version.
Oh, you just updated, that's why.
This is the problem with your printing fetish.
I know. I print so I don't have to try to click around in there. Okay, yeah, that was something that Noel really wanted to look into. This touches on recess, but I think it's beyond that. Even at middle school and high school, talking about opportunities for outdoor. Family and community, what am I missing in this one? Support the district's efforts to offer family university learning opportunities for families and community members. Yes, we wanted to work with you and maybe even have a school committee piece of that. We volunteered Diana to give a lecture on, at, at parent university or family university for the school committee. Okay. So I don't think we should vote on this yet. I think we can wait and assign leaders for each of this, but is there anything that we've come up with that we think needs to be added or eliminated from that?
I have nothing new.
I think we're pretty much good with that, so perhaps next time, Dr. Daly, we can vote on that one.
Okay.
Jeff, anything to add?
No, I think it's fine. It, it pretty well comports with our past discussions.
I didn't do this, I didn't review the pack at that early, but I did review it like Friday night or Saturday or something.
He was working on it this afternoon. I didn't see it when I was looking at it.
Those are some recent updates. Wanted to make up a goal clearly.
Usually when I have a school committee meeting at night, I have to actually do a lot of work during the day and I don't get to my emails. Okay, minutes of the meetings, um, Rich, did you have to, Diana, you want to make them? And you weren't there, correct, are they, am I correct? Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Diana?
Aye.
Rich?
Oh, no, abstained, sorry.
Diana abstains.
Aye.
Rich, Jeff?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so it passes three to zero.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Diana? Rich?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes three to zero. Okay, budget update. Mr. Connolly, I see you've joined us. Do you have any budget update? None at this time?
No, none at this time. It will be, first one for fiscal twenty-four will be at the, the next meeting.
Since you're also our bus guy, I mean, we haven't had a, an opening one. I'm sure Dr. Daly is probably going to give us a little rundown on, on school opening when he gets to his report, but do you have any, how are things going with the buses so far?
Um, things have been overall pretty, pretty smooth with, with the buses. Um, I think it was one of the more smoother openings in terms of the timeliness of the schedules, um, the opening, the opening week. Nothing was, was perfect as we expected. And we, we made some adjustments to some of the runs in the last week or so to, to either start a little bit earlier and move some stops around to either free up some, some space or to make some runs a little more timely. From what I've seen, um, the, the runs are, are working pretty well. And everyone's getting to school kind of on, on time and, um, it's been overall pretty, pretty smooth.
And are, when are the, are the late buses starting now?
The late, uh, first day of the late bus was today at the middle school. So the, the, the sign up for the late bus filled up pretty, pretty quickly. So what we typically do, because I know there's still students looking to, to get on the late bus at the middle school, is we kind of monitor the first, first week, see what the ridership looks like. We assume that not everyone will take advantage every day. And then once that's confirmed and we look at the stops and how long it's taking, we will start opening up additional slots. So if anyone's watching and they've had, that's a question that some families have had. But we do expect to, to open up more slots. We're just going to kind of wait for a week or so before doing that.
Is there an additional fee for that or if you have a bus pass, you can use it?
If you have a bus pass, there's no additional fee.
And, and how's the waitlist looking? Because I know that starts at the end of the summer, but.
So the late bus, again, at the middle school-
No, not, not just the late, but overall the waitlist, to be fair.
Overall waitlist, waitlist, again, no waitlist at the elementary schools. We're still getting, giving out bus passes. As late as last week for the, for the elementary schools, families were enrolling. There is a small waitlist at the middle school and the high school of about ten students, maybe even a little bit less than that. We were able to free up by moving some stops around, a couple of slots, two or three slots last week for families that really, really needed it, and, um, we gave some bus passes out. So it's, it's in the range of like seven or eight, eight, um, you know, students at this point.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to thank Mr. Connolly. He's been taking on a lot. One of our, uh, the person who runs all the buses, just recently had a child, which is wonderful. Mr. Connolly himself has been doing a lot of the shifting the chess pieces around and so thank you for that.
Crazy.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's, he's been putting a lot of time into that, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly, and, and, I mean, very, not to go out of order here, but he's going to be very disappointed because now that they're, uh, when they connect the wastewater facility, he's going to lose the management of the wastewater facility. So.
Right.
I know you guys love that.
That is, that is the highlight of your job, but hopefully you'll, 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 you'll stay with us even though you don't get to keep that on your resume, so.
Right.
Is it donations? McGowan?
Yes. I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude an in-kind donation of a Bose Sound System valued at one thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars from the Foreigner Musical Group to the Mascar's Club. And this would be in, uh, as part of their notorious performance at the Foreigner Concert.
Maybe the first time a classic rock group has donated to the schools. It's pretty cool.
Wouldn't be surprised.
So you have a motion, we need a second. We have a motion and a second. Rich?
Aye.
Diana? Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes four zero.
And I move that the school committee vote to accept with gratitude a donation of one hundred dollars from Rita Mullin to the Mascar's Club.
Aye. Rich?
Aye.
Diana? Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes four zero. Unless he updated, I think there's only two, so. Grants, do, so we want to vote to approve these grants or we vote, that's what we're doing, right? We're going to vote to approve them all? Do you want to talk all about them, Dr. Daly?
These are the entitlement grants that, that we receive from the federal government, so the Disabilities IDEA Grant, six hundred twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred nine, uh, Title I, sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and five dollars. Title II, eighty-nine, three oh three. Title IV, ten thousand. Relatively similar to where they've been, um, the past several years. I will say that Title I and Title II are both lower than when I started here back in the early two, when did I start? Two thousand and ten, around there. So they've, they've gone down in that.
And, and, and Mr. Connolly, are these what we were expecting? We're, we're in the budget? You're muted.
Yes, yes, those, these are in line with what we had budgeted. Um, I would say IDA is even slightly higher than maybe what we maybe initially, initially anticipated or had budgeted. We're budgeting more like under six hundred thousand in the five, seventy-five range. So, um, but Title, everything else is certainly in, in line.
Okay.
So I think, I think though, if they were in the budget, then we don't need to vote separately for them.
Okay, so they're in the budget, we have to do that, okay. Nobody tell the select board it's bigger, it's higher. Okay, so the cell, the cellphone grant has also beneficially approved in the amount of fifteen thousand. Did we vote to accept that yet or not? No?
I don't know if we did yet, so I think we should.
Okay, why don't we do that then?
All right, then I move, um, I move that the committee vote to accept the DESI cellphone grant in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars.
We have a motion and a second. Rich?
Aye.
Diana? Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, passes four zero. Thank you very much. Okay. Committee, policy subcommittee. Okay. Maybe, uh, updates. Funds will be used, oh, sorry, I'm just, overnight trip request, none?
No, it's just-
Okay. Subcommittee updates, finance planning team that, Mr. McGowan, you want to go or you want me to let me run?
I've got some others to do, so why don't you?
So we, we had our first finance planning team of the school year the other day, and mostly we went over what we're going to be going over at the town meeting. I think there, from that, I think the only thing that is a little bit concerning is the kid spot update because, and, and, that's going to be a discussion at the town meeting. It's not really our thing, but I'm still very concerned about that because the original approval was for a hundred and seventy-five thousand. Now there's a, there was a request for three hundred and fifty thousand more. I think two hundred and fifty thousand is going to be requested, but there's no actual, there's no actual plans that have been submitted to be voted on. And, I don't know, I think Mr. McGowan said it best to me afterwards and said, you know, we've taken it out, so I think we have to move forward with things, and so, it, it, but it's-
It's not the ideal way to have gone about it, but it's, it is what it is, I guess.
So I think there's some concerns there.
I only, I almost made a snarky comment when, uh, Dr. McKay was talking about his playground project that had-
I, I thought it too.
That had a plan and a, and a budget and is moving forward and-
I thought it too.
So I saved my snarky comment for now, so it's good.
Yes, then we talked about the ARPA funds that were voted on by the select board, without a finance planning team before that. But then, I, I, I went in a little bit, so my goal for this year is to get the finance committee, the finance planning team to support a June town meeting doing a little bit differently and potentially having three warrant articles. The first one being a budget override to try to actually fund the schools and the municipal budget appropriately. And then have two separate warrant articles, the first one being if we pass the override, this is the budget we would get. The second one being if we don't pass the override, this is the budget we'll get. And so in budget number one, we would not use free cash, we would eliminate full-day kindergarten fee, we would lower some other fees, we would add a couple of positions, we would add the- We would lower some other fees. We would add a couple of positions. We would add the ESSER positions. And we figure out what, how much money we need to be able to do that. Budget two would be doing what we've been doing the last few years, which most likely would involve probably some cuts again. Probably needing to use, you know, free cash. I mean, I think definitely needing to use free cash. Not lowering fees. Again, hopefully we'll try to reduce the full day kindergarten fee, but just on the school side, like trying to put that before the town meeting because frankly, I feel like we're at the point where I cannot in good faith say, let, let's just do this budget without asking the town if they support a little bit more to try to do more, you know? Do we, are, do we want to have a full day kindergarten fee? Do we want to do this? And then the municipal, municipal side would be the exact same thing where they've been trying to add firefighters. They've been using free cash as well. There's positions that they haven't had either. So we are a long way away from saying that we're anywhere near there, but I got in a soapbox for a few minutes and started talking about that. And I don't know where everyone's approval will be. There were some questions and, but I think personally, that's what I think we should do this year. And I'll be pushing a little bit on that. So.
Yeah, I just feel like it's definitely got to be, um, talked about and discussed and as an option. Because it's getting harder and harder to get where we need to be.
Yep.
And we didn't get where we needed to be this year.
Okay. You have a question, Katie, or? Okay. Athletic subcommittee update?
You want to go Diana or I know it's hard when you're, when you were doing that.
I have the agenda, but I don't have my notes with me.
Uh, I don't have notes either, but, um, so we talked, we did, you know, as usual, we did a fall season sports update. We talked again about potentially doing a sign on the campus down by, um, Route 62 where we could recognize state champions of all different stripes as they happen. The, the town signs that are at the, at the roads leading into town have, were updated last year and that's great. But that's sort of their process. Um, we're, we're talking about something where we can, the minute, you know, the football team wins the championship, it goes up on the sign. And then the next one that happens and last year, of course, was, there was just so many of them. And then it, it, it's a sign that's easy to rotate, uh, uh, sections in and out and, or, you know, and move them around and, and, and make sure that we're recognizing not just sports, but in, in any of the competitions that, that happen.
We even talked about maybe rotating them seasonally so that when you're coming to play in the winter season, the winter champs up there is something like that.
Any sorts of, sort of like banner raising ceremony after you win a championship?
I don't know, but that, that's probably something there should be too. Like, like the first, the first home game of, of the football season, for instance.
Yeah. I mean, just like, that's.
I, I think that'd be great for the maskers at the one act, like at the one act play, the next one act play contest if they're hosting here, they could.
To raise, yeah, raise the banner on.
What else that was important? Dr. Daly, if you had any particular things you want to note to?
Updates about the, um, the fall season, obviously, and, you know, waiver updates, getting a sense of our teams, our coaches. We talked about the process for changing coaching stipends and how that will go through the negotiation process. We also talked about a donation that we, I believe we've already accepted here. We did get that check today. It's a $50,000 check that, um, we have some ideas for. The person who made the donation really earmarked it somewhat for baseball. But we, uh, we're going to be able to move forward with some of those improvements, uh, for baseball as well. So.
And, and do we need a lot of waivers for sports this year for the fall sports or not?
It's, it's not, there's, there's not been that many, but there have been a few. So we have done some eighth grade waivers this year.
And, and I mean, just on sports overall, like I'm always curious to see what percentage of students are doing, are playing a fall sport that are doing an activity or something, just to see that, just to see what it is. And so like, I'm curious if we can maybe get that information sometime to see.
Mr. Johnson, definitely provided that information on the sports side this year for the fall. And I, I don't have that number and I'm sure you don't either. But, um, that's, it's an interesting point though, to sort of meld that with, with, um, maskers and band and all that stuff.
I know you alluded to some of the numbers from like the legislation from like last year, but the class size.
It's a class.
Yeah.
That's what he was relating to. Yeah. And that percentage wise, we're still there, but they're just, it's a smaller senior class.
Yeah. Knowing the percentages, seeing the impact on fees, things like that, but also again, if we need more waivers and we want to make sure we're supporting enough teams that people can play.
Yep.
That students can play and so, um, or, or do whatever they want to do, whether they, you know, are in a, in a musical or playing a sport. So just, just curious to keep track of that.
I think he discussed there were only two teams that made cuts this year, I believe.
But they had enough, they had enough kids going out because I know there are a lot of districts that I think after COVID didn't see people come back. And so they're, you know, I've heard about teams that are struggling to get enough. So I just want to make sure that we have enough.
Volleyball is a big hit, right?
Yeah, I forget what the other team was.
Yeah. Fine art subcommittee update?
So we, uh, did have our first meeting. Um, we talked a lot about, um, uh, calendar. It's amazing the amount of work going into setting the calendar that has to happen now because there's, I don't know, what, maybe 30 events that, that have to be placed on the calendar and we better get it placed now because you'll be shut out. We had a new member of the committee, uh, Dr. Daly, if you could remind me.
Ashley Doke, who is now a, a new curriculum leader.
Right.
So it's, it's great to have elementary representation as well at the table.
Yep. Um, so that was good. Regarding the calendar, uh, it's going to be online. Uh, is that going to be shared for the community or just for you guys internally?
We, we do share that out. I, I added, the one that I have added already is the art show. They've, they've decided to move the art show and make it distinct from the all town chorus and band. So that's going to be April 25th, I believe, for the reception. And that's on the school calendar now. And then, but the, there's a, you know, the, the show goes from, um, I double checked because I got it in here. But it, it covers that few week period. So the, the district wide art show, um, starts on the 24th and then the reception is on, um, the 25th.
Okay. Subcommittee schedule, finance planning team, we're meeting October 2nd. So we're meeting in the morning of town meeting potentially. Just to kind of see an update, mostly in kids spot because a few of us asked for more information on that before town meeting. Yeah. Athletic subcommittee, November 7th at noon and fine art subcommittee, November 7th at 3:15. Administrative report, Dr. Daly.
Sure. So I just, I shared a couple of items here. I can share anything more about, um, opening. I shared a general overview about MCAS accountability data. This is just very similar to what I shared with the community. And, you know, it's the Department of Ed's report, but also just our report. What, you know, and I, I, we could talk more on the 23rd about, um, my thoughts on MCAS and the response to your question. Mr. Clean, we should hear from him as this is now his, uh, wheelhouse as well. But I think what I do in here, I have a sense is it's always important to keep in mind MCAS assessments are only one measure of student success. I think that our committee and our community keeps MCAS in the right perspective. We value it. We value the accountability. We discuss it. We look at it, but we are not teaching to the test. We're not spending all day doing drills and, and, you know, we teach the standards. And if, and what I've always said, if we focus on the standards and do well on the standards, the results are going to show in the test. And that's been our philosophy and, and that, um, i- i- is showing through. The second item was just more testing related, but the middle school has been selected for the NAEP test. If we decline participation, it could impact our, um, ability to accept Title I funds and some of the other funds that I showed earlier. So it's one of those, um, that we need to do as a district. There's also, there is a, I believe it's an optional survey that we're going to look into whether we're going to do that or not. But this test will be, um, in March and it's only at the middle school at this time. So more information will be shared about that as it gets closer.
So the funds that keep going down, would it be further reduced?
Yeah. To, to zero. So that we can't really, uh, go there. So this is, you know, and we contribute to, the, the NAEP results are very important for the nation. This is where they're able to see how we're doing across the country. Massachusetts can compare to NAEP and we compare ourselves with other countries around the world. And so it is important for those benchmarks to check in and make sure that we're on course.
Okay. Correspondence at this time. Future business, we have a meeting October 2nd. So we are going to meet at 5:00 PM before town meeting?
So I, I am suggesting that based upon, we tabled the evaluation and maybe there's another item or two we could do. We've, we have been able to meet before town meeting in a brief meeting successfully. And I think that, so this might not have all of the, uh, pieces that even, you know, the, when Michael spoke to his budget update, I don't know that he was thinking of this meeting. Maybe it's more the 23rd, uh, which was the originally next meeting.
Okay.
But I think this would be a brief meeting, um, you know, where we could address some items and then move to town meeting at 6:45.
So I was going to say, my, my suggestion would be then that we have that meeting in here.
Yeah.
And the DLL as opposed to just at town meeting floor. So we'll meet here at 5 o'clock.
Yep.
Then we can go over to town meeting at, and are, are we doing in the gymnasium again? Are we staying in the gymnasium now, not, not in Performing Arts Center?
Yes. And my understanding is that the, there's not, there was a need for other rooms prior to town meeting and that is no longer the case. So I think us having a meeting in here will be, um, will be not, not an issue at all.
Do we need, do we need an hour and 45 or an hour and a half?
We can, we can discuss the time if you'd like to. Yep. I just had it on here as a suggestion. I don't know if there's other items that, we definitely don't need that long to discuss my evaluation publicly. So.
I don't know. Did you?
Do a 10 minute meeting, I'd be very.
I mean, Mr. Friedman might talk for a little while, so.
Yeah, we could talk about doing a 6 o'clock meeting or 5:30 or, you know, whatever you'd like to do. And we may want to do an executive session.
I was going to say, we probably should do an executive session as well. And that's why I'm just wondering. Yeah, maybe we, maybe we have the executive session before. That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, the, the, assuming everyone is planning and able to make it, I mean.
So if this sounds good, we can further discuss, uh, Mr. Buckley, and then I can.
Yep, we can talk.
Into the committee with the time.
Um, October 2nd, we have town meeting. We'll be at, and then October 23rd, we have a meeting and that is it. There's nothing more. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
We have a motion. We have a second. Rich?
Aye.
Diana? Jeff?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. Passes four zero. Thank you, everyone.